Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everybody to the February 28th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. And ask if you have pagers or cellphones, if you would silence those or turn them off now so that they don't interrupt us during the course of the meeting. And first order of business is approval of the minutes for February 14th.
I think we've got enough here. Janice and I both were out last week.
In that case, that will be put off to the next meeting. Continuances?
On uncontested requests for continuance today, we have eight items. Item 28, PUD 1480, request to continue until March 14th. Item 29, C 6418, until March 14th. Item 30, PUD 1483, March 14th. Item 31, C 6431, until March 14th. Item 32 is C 6428, until March 28th. Item 33 is an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan. That has been continued until March 28th. Item C 6407, which is item 34, continued until March 28th. And then, item 35, ABC 772, has been withdrawn.
Now, my usual question is, has anyone come down to talk to us about any of these items today? And someone is signed up on item 31.
That's what I was going to say, Mr. Chairman. I talked to a number of protestors. They were here for 31. They didn't realize that it had been continued. And that's the Truman site, so they'll make sure they know what it is.
Diane Friedland?
Yes.
Did you want to say something to us?
Yes.
Please come forward. If you would give us your name and address for the record.
Diane Friedland, 1719 Northeast 13th Street.
Thank you.
Okay. Should I just start why I am not in agreement with this building?
Well, we're not going to hear the item today. You know that.
Yeah.
It's been continued. So if you want to tell us what your concern is, that would be fine. And then, the item will actually be heard at a future meeting.
Okay. Number one, this area, this block is already extremely congested, especially in the mornings, between 8:00 and 10:00, and in the afternoon, between 3:00 and 5:00. Avery Church and Head Start is at the west end of the block. Moon School is at the east end of the block. Northeast 13th, on the north side of the property, and Euclid, on the south side, are both only two lanes wide with no room for parking and blocking half of the street. Number two, the block to north, northeast 14th, six of the 21 houses that are there are vacated and dilapidated. Northeast 13th Street, one of seven houses is vacant and dilapidated. Euclid, two of the seven houses are vacant and dilapidated. The block to the south, northeast 11th, four out of 17 houses are vacant and dilapidated. Most of the occupied housing needs some cosmetic work outside. Their neighborhood looks terrible. Oklahoma City Board of Realtors records will show that in the Coberton-North Highland Neighborhood, all the homes sold in the past year were sold for less than $30,000. No one but an idiot would buy a home for upwards of $100,000 in this area that I have just described. My husband, this is, I'm speaking for my husband, because he was a former real estate broker who lived on 13th Street. And he would advise anyone against buying a home for that amount of money there. I might include that this area is full of loose dogs running around, trash on the streets in bottles. Development of this property for anything other than as an open space situation for the benefit of the present or future residents would be detrimental to the neighborhood in that it would increase traffic congestion, which is already at the limit. It would create an eyesore for the residents who live on northeast 13th Street, as well as those on Euclid. Rehabbing the existing vacant, dilapidated, and abandoned, and distressed properties in the neighborhood should be the first priority before any more new construction begins. This just is common sense.
Thank you.
So that's it. Thank you.
Any other discussion on items 28 through 35 on our agenda? Second. We have a motion as second to approve the continuances. Cast your votes, and those are approved.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask, this lady, ma'am? Is it possible that you could come back and speak to us again when this matter is actually heard?
I would.
I wish you would. I wish you would. Thank you.
We have a number of new requests for continuance. Item 13 is PUD 1481. That will be continued until March 14th. Item 15, C 6424, continued until March 28th. Item 17, S PUD 701, until March 14th. Item 18, P V 087, until March 14th. Item 19, C E 835, until March 28th. Item 20, PUD 1475. Item 21, C 6388. Item 22, PUD 1482. And item 23, C 6426, all continued until March 14th.
Did anyone come today to talk to us about the items just read?
Oh, there's two more, so...
Oh, that's right.
Double-page continuance list today. Item 24, P C 10324. And item 25, C 6405, also until March 14th. Thank you, Todd.
Again, anyone come to talk to us about the items on the agenda just read?
Move approval of the continuance.
We have a motion as second to approve the other continuances. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Are there any additional continuance requests from the public today?
Yes.
Come forward. Give us your name and address and which agenda item it is.
Name is Brian Sprigler. Address is 1901 Northwest 193rd Circle in Edmond. I'd like to request a continuance for item 8, P C 10336. Reason for request on this is due to the notification time. I was notified, I'm the Homeowner Association President for Thornhill. This development is going across the street from Pennsylvania Avenue from us. And I found out about this 48 hours ago from now. And it sounds like no one in our neighborhood has heard about it as of yet. And so I started a petition less than 24 hours ago. We have 200 signatures, which I turned in before the meeting. You should have that. But I'd like to request a continuance to the 14th of March, so that I can at least notify all affected residents and have an opportunity to speak with the developer.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, or Mr. Box?
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. We just learned of this continuance, or continuance request. What we would ask is to proceed on with the R1ZL portion, as that is a down zone from the current duplex zoning. And then we'll agree to go meet with the neighbors on the apartment portion.
Is that agreeable with you? Is that satisfy you?
Yes. Going forward with this, continuing that.
Mr. Chairman, I was just saying to myself, surely Mr. Box will want to take a couple weeks and go meet with these folks.
Well, on the apartment, absolutely. But I see no reason to continue a down zone. Their protest is intensity, and we're actually creating a less intense area, not to mention we have 50 support signatures from the neighborhood actually adjoining the subject.
But it's being presented to us basically as a package, right? So...
Well, and I spoke to the council's office, and we can separate the R1ZL and the R4. We would ask to do that, and we have filed a plat on the R1ZL portion. So we'd like to push that forward, as this is, like I said, what the neighbors immediately adjacent to this have asked, this down zone.
Any other discussion, Commissioners? A motion?
Yeah, what, I'm still confused as to what's your, what's your opinion here.
Okay, with that.
So if we separate those two, the R1ZL?
Right. So we'd go forward with just this, and continue that portion, and we would go meet with the guys.
And that's the R4?
Make a motion?
Okay. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Need a motion? I need... We need a motion to continue at least a portion, Dan?
Yes.
I would make a motion that we continue the entire matter until March 14th.
Is there a second?
A second is a...
Oh, a motion as second to continue the entire item. Now, is that what you want to do?
I'm here.
Mic's a second. I'm sorry, I can't hear you, you don't have a mic on.
I'm fine with proceeding on the R1ZL part. I mean, that's, that's a break for everybody, frankly, from what is currently available, as that is now a down zoning versus the R4 that exists right there, from what I understand that strip of land was. It's R2 and O2, so R1ZL is a better...
So do you really want to second the motion?
Yes, so we can vote.
Or do you want to let it die and have another? All right, well, we've got a motion before us, and it's to continue the entire item. Cast your votes. And that is denied five to one. Now we need a new motion.
I'll make a motion to hear the R1ZL.
And continue the...
And continue the R4.
Second.
That'll work?
That'll work. Okay, we have a motion as second to bifurcate the application and hear the north portion, R1ZL. Cast your votes. That's approved, five to one. Okay, gentlemen, if you'll take a seat, and we'll take this up in order. Any other items? We need a motion? No, we don't. We're good to go. Consent pocket.
All right, we have four items on the consent pocket today. Item 1, C E 848. Item 2, C 6438. Item 3, C 5378. And item 4, C 6038.
Anyone come to talk about items 1 through 4 today? Move the consent pocket. A motion as second to approve the consent pocket. Cast your votes. That's approved.
On items requiring separate vote, item 5 is S N 077. This is to consider a resolution changing the name of southwest West 64th Street to Lindy Ritz Lane on the campus at Will Rogers Airport.
Mark, do you want to...
Thank you. Good afternoon. Mark Cranberg, Airport's Director and General Manager for the Oklahoma City Airport Trust. This application initially started with officials at the Mike Monrooney Air Nautical Center. The Airport Trust is a landlord for the Mike Monrooney Center, and they brought that to us to look at. We looked at the city policies on street naming, and we, as the landowner, are required to be the entity that makes the application. At the January Airport Trust meeting, the Airport Trust authorized me to move forward with the application. We request your favorable consideration. This is a street, although it's southwest 64th Street, it resides within the campus area of Mike Monrooney Air Nautical Center. It is a secured campus. It's not accessible to the public without having authorization or being under an escort. And you can notice that the, the street actually starts on the, on the hangar side, near the runways and taxiways, and then moves west to what is known as Eddie Avenue. So it basically is a self-contained street. Be happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Charles Sullivan with the FAA Centers here as well, if you have any questions of him.
Okay, no one has signed up, Commissioners? Move approval. Second. Okay, we have a motion as second to approve item 5. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item 6 is ABC 778. It's an application by The Garage, S OKC LLC, for an ABC 2 at 1024 West I-240 Service Road, Ward 5.
Give us your name and address, please, for the record.
My name's Dave Zimmer, 3101 West Tecumseh, Norman, Oklahoma. Represent How Smith Restaurant Group. This is another concept of ours that we are, wanted to construct on, for a restaurant with incidental stuff. I'll call.
Okay, no one has signed up, Commissioners? Second. We have a motion as second to approve item 6. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Item 7 is P C 10335, an application by Ken D. and Hot Page Park to rezone 1811 North MacArthur Boulevard from R1 Single Family to C3 Community Commercial, Ward 3.
My name is Ken Page. I live in Zookon, 10921, Nocturne 37, Zookon.
Thank you.
And I come here to aid for the rezoning for my property. I have the park of my property ready in C3, and now I aid for the rezone to park the lab on that property.
Okay, Commissioners, no one has signed up? Move approval. We have a motion as second to approve item 7. Cast your votes. You're approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 8 is P C 10336. This is a modified application by the CHAS Investment Group to rezone 19601 North Pennsylvania from P U D 1349 to the R1ZL Single Residential Zero Lot Line.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Chris Anderson with SMC Consultants. The application in its present form is now for R1ZL, and this is a modification from its current zoning of R2. So what we're looking at is the difference between 68 dwelling units as proposed within the R2 compared to what is now going to come in, around 28 dwelling units. As I mentioned, we have a support petition from the neighbors that abut this immediately west, of some 46 to 50 signatures. And this was an agreement that the developer reached with these homeowners, and we would ask for your support.
Okay, I don't think anyone has signed up in opposition to this portion of the application. Is that the case?
I move approval of the R1ZL portion of this application.
Second. Okay, we have a motion as second to approve the R1ZL portion. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Thank you.
Item 9 is P C 10332, an application by IM7 Promotions to rezone 3901 Noma Road from R1 Single Family to R8 Single Family in Ward 4.
Warren Peacock with WPM Design Group. Things are going too good, I'm afraid. I'm nervous now. This is a 23-acre tract, which is north of I-40 and west of Noma Road. It is currently zoned R1. We are proposing to develop it in one-acre tract, so as part of our agreement with the staff, we agreed to downzone it to R8 from the R1. That's what we have, that's what you have before you.
And does the pond go away, that nice water feature?
It's, it's not much of a water feature right now. It's fairly dry.
Sounds like Hefner, but that's...
I got a couple of questions, and I can't remember which one it's on. It's a...
We have a companion item.
I think it's on the...
Plenary plat.
Item... On the water quality and consent, or quality and...
Well, we did our water study and pulled samples. We pulled two samples, which is 10% of the lot count, which I believe is the requirement of the city. We did run all of the particulars. The city required plus additional constituents in the water, and everything does meet all the DQ and EPA requirements. It is underneath those allowable limits of the different constituents.
As far as quantity, I thought I saw in the reading that it was like six gallons...
Well, we had, we pulled two different wells. One is a very shallow well with six gallons a minute. We have a deeper well we pulled, which actually pumped 16 gallons a minute. So we're averaging right around probably 11, 10 to 11 gallons a minute. The one, the one well that did the six gallons a minute was a very shallow well. I believe the requirement of the city is it has to do at least five. So we exceeded that on both of them.
In that area, if I'm not mistaken, I mean, low is about 20.
Well, yeah, you're in the Garber Wellington area out there, which has got really good quality water and a good recharge. I mean, from the samples that we ran and everything that I've seen, I don't anticipate any issues with the water either rate, pumping rates, or water quality.
How long will it be before this goes to council if we approve it today?
Six weeks.
Well, this is just the preliminary plat. Oh, you're talking about the zoning, zoning. I'm sorry, yes, zoning.
Okay. We do have someone signed up, too, before we take action.
Yeah. Well, let's hear from the protester there.
Melvin Hughes? Mr. Hughes, if you would give us your name and address, please.
Yes, my name's Melvin Hughes. I live at 3905 Noma Road. I'm just, the property's south of this proposed subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, as far as the water well, I haven't seen...
Sir, sir, you need to address us.
Okay, I'm sorry. As far as their water well, I haven't seen where they went in there to do anything for perk test or anything on this property. But my concerns, on the original plat that came out or drawing, they had it marked as 40th Street. And I'm at 3905, across the street's 3901. That should be 39th Street, not 40th. Okay, secondly, environmental impact problem. As you stated, the pond that's on there, there's two lots there that, that pond takes up all those two lots. And there's a huge dam right north of my property line that they're going to have to either knock the dam out, fill in the pond, or there's going to be a 20-foot wall there next to my place. It's all wooded, all brushed over. And the, the, if you take the pond out, all of that area drains down through that pond where there used to be a washout, went all the way down under the Interstate 40. If you take that out, you're going to have a huge ditch running through there again. They're going to have to do something for erosion control. Next item, fencing. I don't know what they propose to do on fencing around the subdivision. Right now, we've only got 19 to 20 properties on the whole street, and they're proposing to put in 19, 20 more properties just in that little area right there. It's going to create a traffic impact on that little street pulling out on 29th Street. There's no stop sign or anything like that. It's two-lane each way, each road. So you may have a traffic jam problem in mornings and evenings. Secondly, the I-40 Service Road that runs, or lastly, the I-40 Service Road that runs south of my property is probably the last piece of dirt and gravel road we have in Oklahoma City. There is a Williams sod farm, Williams Company excavation that has started a mining operation just east of the Noma Road, and they run in and out of there a lot. And we get a tremendous amount of dust and pollution in the air from those trucks running constantly. I've never complained about it, but I, if we're going to put in 19, 20 more houses with that much more traffic, we sure need to pave that road. That's what I would push for. Okay, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
You want me to try to address some or all of his concerns?
That's why you're there.
We have changed the street to 39th Street. That's an easy one. I just talked to the developer on the pond. We do currently have that as part of two lots. I think in the next item, we were going to ask for, we were going to ask for a variance on the open space. They are agreeable to leave the pond there intact and dedicate that as part of a common area, which will satisfy the open space requirement. We won't have to have that variance. Also, we'll take care of his problems, because that way we can control any of the drainage with an outlet structure on that pond to make sure he has no impact on him downstream. Other than, I mean, the, he is correct, there is a gravel road on the frontage, but there is access from both ends of this development. So, you know, and it's a standard R1 or R8-type open-section roadway on Noma Lane. It's a full 24-foot street, so it's two-lane traffic. So I don't know if that really will have much bearing.
Are you curbing guttering? I forgot.
Well, we haven't really finally decided yet. We currently are showing it in the preliminary plat as an open section, but we've talked about either open section or curbing gutter. I think it, that that really has not, decision hasn't been a final one yet.
What about sprinkling?
We are agreed to sprinkle the houses. That was part of the staff requirement, and we are in agreement with that.
Okay. I would like to know more about the water, the...
Spare.
The quantity of the water.
Okay.
And I think I would feel more comfortable if we saw that before we passed it from here. And I'm going to ask for a, for a two-week delay in this case to be able to do that. Do you think you can handle that?
You okay? You need to come up here and speak.
If you'll give us your name and address, please.
I'm Mark Cordray. I live at 3900 South Noma Road, which is across the street on the property. And the water, the well that we drew it from, the pump is 30 years old, and that's what the pump puts out. It was six. If it was a new pump with a horse and a half or a horse, it would probably put out around 16, which the other one did.
I would still want to know a little bit more about that water in that area, the quality and the quantity. And the only way we're going to find that out is to do the test, I think. And I would feel a lot more comfortable...
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
And I know it's going to be six weeks before it goes to council, and you could probably do that between now and council, but I'm just not comfortable...
Test where?
I'm sorry?
Where do, where do you want the test, other than where it is?
Required by the city.
I don't know. I guess the Planning Commission has not seen any of the testing results that we did from the two samples, the two wells that we took them from. We can provide that.
Are you taking samples from existing wells?
Yes, we have one that's north of the site and one that was west, east of the site.
Is that acceptable, JJ, for a requirement?
They can either drill, test wells, but in areas where they have existing wells, they can draw from nearby wells to do the test.
Is there a certain depth that they have to go to?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know.
And I'm only asking that question because we can provide those results to the Planning Commission, or we can provide them to you, but I just...
I'm concerned, you know, we've got these additions all over the place.
Yeah.
And I'm concerned, you know, we're right in the big middle of a drought. And, you know, I know that the Garber Wellington is a fantastic aquifer, and it's a real fast recharge aquifer. But, you know, we seem to think sometimes that we have endless water with these things, you know? And I'm one of the culprits. I've got an acre in, not very far from this, and I've sprinkled my whole acre. I just recently cut off the back half of my acreage. Now, I'm not sprinkling it. I'm concerned with the, the quantity of water that we're using on those one-acre developments. And I want to be a little bit more comfortable with that, you know, the quality, or the quantity of the water that we're getting out of these things. And, you know, we all want green grass, but we all want to shower and flush the stool also.
We will take, well, let's go ahead and do the two-week continuance. We can get with you with our results, and we can talk a little bit more about them and see what else we need to do to get everybody comfortable. Is that...
So you'd be comfortable with a...
Yeah, if you want a two-week continuance, let's go ahead and we can do that, and then we can have time to meet with you in the interim and hopefully resolve all this.
Okay. All right. That's my motion.
Second. Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item nine to March fourteenth. Cast your votes. At which time?
Thank you.
March tenth, I'm sorry. Oh, March fourteenth.
March fourteenth, I think.
Yeah, we'll continue the next item also.
Yeah, okay.
Need a motion for that. Second. I don't think I'm supposed to make the motion.
So move.
We have this motion and a second to continue item ten. Cast your votes, and that's approved also.
Thank you.
Item eleven is S.P. four fifty-four, an application by Hampel Oil for a special permit for an above-ground flammable liquid storage in the I-two Modern Industrial District at eight thousand and one Pole Road and Ward Four. Good afternoon. I'm Alan Gray with the N.I.A. Sullivan Group. We're representing the buyers of this particular property. It's a parcel of about thirty-six point nine-nine acres, zoned I-two, and we'll be talking about the special permit for an above-ground flammable liquid storage. I'll be turning the mic over to Mr. Ted Dallas, the regional manager for Hampel Oil. Along with us as well is Pat Hampel, the branch manager for the Oklahoma City Branch Office.
Ted Dallas, sixteen thirty-three Natchez Road in Edmond. The request for the special permit is for above-ground storage of methanol. Methanol is classified as an alternative fuel. We use it as a product we sell to companies such as San Ridge, Chesapeake Pipeline Companies. They use it to put down the pipelines, keep pipelines from freezing during cold weather, and that's just the purpose for the special request, is for above-ground storage tanks, one tank at this time.
And have you talked to our public works department before the meeting today about making some improvements to Pole Road?
Yes, yes. We kinda outlined with him, the initial scope of our project just involves really the ten acres in the northeast corner of the property. Even though we're buying thirty-seven acres, our, our site is only gonna be those ten acres in the northeast corner, so...
Anyway, we talked to applicant earlier, and we looked at the issue of street condition, and we feel like that this issue can, it doesn't really require a T. We can deal with this at the permit stage, but we'll discuss with them when the permit comes in for putting this facility.
Okay, so you don't want us to do anything with it today?
No, not right.
All right.
I think we're okay.
Okay, no one has signed up, commissioners?
I'm away.
Oh, looked like you were with the applicant, the way this is written. I'm sorry.
I represent Lock Supply.
I'm sorry?
I represent Lock Supply.
Oh, well, come forward.
I'm Don.
Apologize, I didn't understand.
I'm Don C. at twenty-eight thirteen North Donald. I represent Lock Supply. They're thirteen hundred Southeast eighty-second, and I've looked at all the reports the city had at that time, and I see nothing in there about fire suppression. Fire plugs, hydrants, don't we need those in that area?
JJ? Or Mike, if he's back there.
When they come in for permits, they will be reviewed, and there will have to be fire hydrants within a certain area of every building on the property, and all of the tanks will be reviewed, and the diking will be reviewed by the Fire Marshal's Office at the building permit stage.
So that doesn't get addressed here? It gets addressed at permits and...
Okay, and that'll be at another meeting like this?
It won't be a public meeting, no. It'll be when they go, actually go and apply for the permits to construct what they need on the site. Then they have to meet all the city's requirements with respect to things like suppression, separation from adjoining properties and so forth.
We have two hundred employees over there, and that was a major concern of that.
Appreciate your concern, and it would be addressed. Thank you.
Do we have some sort of mechanism whereby this gentleman can give his input on this subject, or at least get information about it when the permit comes up for review? JJ, somebody? Do we, is there, is there some way for him to know what happens on this topic?
He could just go to permits and get the same information as the applicant.
But I mean, does he have to check hourly, check the good issue, or...
The stated requirements, so...
It's not a negotiation. It's the city's order.
Certainly, he could work with the applicant.
I know from our standpoint, we'd be more than willing to have him involved and see what we're gonna do. We do all of our builds to S.P.C. regulations, and so we're more than happy to get him involved and see what we're doing.
Well, you just might exchange contact information with him then.
There you go.
Thank you. Motion on item eleven?
To approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item eleven. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item twelve is S.P.D. six ninety-eight, an application by Paula Douglas to rezone fourteen twenty-four North Rockwell from R-one single-family to S.P.D. six ninety-eight in Ward Three.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs, one eight one nine South Morgan Road, on behalf of the applicant. The, there's one T.E., and I would just like to discuss that to you a little bit. What we've been seeing in the designs of the mini-storages is that the five-foot landscape buffer within those fences is hard to maintain. I don't have a problem with it as much as I would just like that to be allowed. Me to put the fence up against the paving and let that landscape buffer be on the outside of the fence so people could enjoy the tree, because the people that come into the mini-storage don't care about the trees. So it would serve more purpose if I could put that on the outside than the inside. I have so many clients just saying, can we just concrete everything within the fence? Who's gonna see it? So that's just my, that's my only comments on that. So I agree that T.E. as long as I can put that on the outside of the fence.
JJ?
That's acceptable to us.
That's what I would think.
I can amend the spread, pull the fence in.
Okay. No one signed up? Move approval. With the landscaping on the outside of the wall. Cast your votes, and you're approved.
Thank you.
Item thirteen has been continued until March fourteenth. Item fourteen is C. sixty-four thirty-one, a final plat of Deer Valley Estates in Ward Eight.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Brian Coon, representing the applicant. You saw this preliminary plat several months ago, so this is our first phase of the final plat. Agree with TEs number one and two. On number three, we're asking for variance. Anytime you have a double entrance coming into a subdivision, then you turn to loop around going right or left, which we do. It's, it's new, it's new regulation, I think, started four or five years ago, that they want you to go to a thirty-two-foot street till you get to your first intersection. We're just requesting a variance to let us go with just a twenty-six since there's only sixty-something ultimate lots, so request a variance on that. On number four, we're gonna withdraw. We don't need that variance right now. We're gonna turn in a new preliminary plat in the next probably month. We are gonna provide that stub. There's been a subdivision planned to the north, of which I talked to the engineer, will provide a stub that they'll connect towers, so we won't need that variance in the future. So there will be a stub between the two subdivisions. And then on the next one, number five, there's a variance requested, and we did this at the preliminary plat stage, too. Because there's that little cutout at the south property line there, normally your intersections have to be a hundred and ten feet apart, ours is ninety-two, but it's just we have no choice right there because of the boundaries, and it, again, it was, it was the same thing. It was approved at preliminary plat. Number seven, eight, nine, we agree with. Number ten, we agree with. Number six, really just an eyebrow issue of how we're gonna develop that, and I'll talk to engineering about that, so... Again, just quickly, I just summarized, we need a variance on three and five. Number four, I guess we're just gonna delete that, JJ, is that right?
Okay. And request approval. All right, you flew by there, and you said, Brian, you're gonna give us a revised...
There'll be a revised preliminary plat probably within a month or so, because now that there's a subdivision to the north, originally there was not sewer.
So we're not gonna look at this today?
That is, that's the new preliminary plat that will become, we have not submitted that yet. Terry just wanted to see what our plan was, and that's, that will be, we'll be submitting that along with our application and fees that shows the stub going to the north in the future.
But this is a final plat?
Final plat's today on what you're seeing on the screen. Yes, sir. And it matches that preliminary plat. It matches the original, this matches the original preliminary plat as far as phase one is concerned.
Okay, so it's just really the east half...
Yes.
...that we're looking at?
Yes.
And you, we'll get a...
We'll get a preliminary on what is now C.A. four?
An entirely new piece of...
Yeah, the kind of west half. You're gonna get a new preliminary.
Entirely west half?
Yes.
So everything west of the subject site, we'll get a new preliminary on at some time?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll get all new artwork.
All new artwork.
In the west.
New drawings, all right.
Yeah, at the time, we did the original preliminary plat, there was not a subdivision to our north.
I see.
So we had no sewer to go to, so it was a different deal.
All right.
Times have changed.
Okay, so the variances on three and five are the same variances that we granted at the preliminary plat for this particular tract? Is that right?
I believe on the T.E. five it is.
Five is the same.
On three, it's, it's really a subdivision regulation that requires you take a boulevard entrance, and you have to connect to a thirty-two-foot street. I don't think there was even a variance granted at, at preliminary plat for that, was it? Okay, there wasn't a variance granted, because we didn't even, I don't even know, I mean, there should've been probably, but...
Brian, we're over here.
I just wanna make sure I done what I did need to do.
Point being is, we have a variance now that we should've had then.
Yes.
This is confusing.
I try.
I think I got it now.
Is one fifty-second gonna be a collector street?
Uh, no, it's one fifty-second coming into the subdivision, yeah, that'll be a boulevard.
Well, I'm talking about the, the next plat, the one to the west.
No, no. Because it's just, it serves sixty lots.
Is the fire department okay with that, I wonder?
Yeah, as long as it connects, has that section connection.
We're not over Crowe and that street?
No.
Or Arturo Street?
No, sir.
Are you okay with holding the final plat and going to council till you submit the preliminary plat?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, because this won't go to council for six months? Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, just make that part of your motion, but we'll hold the final for going to council till you see a preliminary plat on the back half.
So that is this application?
Yes.
Right? So it won't go to council till we see the preliminary on the west side?
Till we see the west side as well. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take a stab at it. I'm gonna move the variance on item number three.
Second.
That's...
T.E. number three.
Okay, we have that in a second. Can we do one at a time?
Yeah.
That's what I said.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the variance, T.E. three. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
I'll move the variance to T.E. number five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the variance, T.E. five. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
I'll move the application, subject to having it held until, from city council submission, until the final plat is submitted on the property to the west.
Wait a minute.
Preliminary plat to the west.
Preliminary.
And hold this for final acceptance at council until that is done.
There you go.
And delete T.E. four. Delete T.E. four. Don't mean to put words...
Do we need to do that? Do we need to delete T.E. four?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, because we're having connection now.
All the above.
We'll have a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this item as condition. Cast your votes. Thank you.
Item fifteen has been continued until March the twenty-eighth. Item sixteen is S.P.U.D. seven hundred, an application by Sergio Ramirez to rezone twenty-seven hundred South Portland from R-one and eighty-two districts to S.P.U.D. seven hundred and Ward Six.
My name is Sergio. I'd like to see if you can approve twenty-seven hundred from residential to commercial.
Commissioners, no one has signed up. Questions or comment? We have a motion and a second to approve item sixteen. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Items seventeen through twenty-five have all been continued. On item twenty-six, which is an ordinance to be introduced and set for public hearing on March the fourteenth, amending chapter fifty-nine of municipal code regarding the establishment of an overlay on Lincoln Boulevard.
Any discussion, commissioners? James, is there a reason why we're doing this?
That's what I was gonna ask. The planning department there. What's the shape of the overlay? I mean, what is the...
I think JJ is the author of this.
Can we ask the author?
It simply was a request of Councilman Kelly to establish this overlay between thirtieth and fiftieth street along Lincoln.
To accomplish what?
To prohibit beer taverns and mixed beverage clubs. It would still allow restaurants with low-point beer and mixed beverage. It would just prohibit drinking establishments.
That's what I thought, because that's a quarter and everything, so...
I'm not sure, I mean, why don't we overlay the whole city this way? I mean, why pick out a single area that doesn't seem, I mean, unique or distinctive in any way, using Dennis's terms, out here today?
Just, we don't have to discuss it today, but...
We've had a few. You know, we cleaned up Lincoln Boulevard, and it's kind of a gateway into the capital. We already had like two, two club or restaurant club establishments north of Thirty-Sixth Street. Then we got some that veer off on Thirty-Sixth Street off of Lincoln. And I think that's, that's an attempt not to let that become a party and more clubs come in, not restaurants, but the club part, so...
I mean, we can set this for March fourteenth if you wanna do that.
I'm not, I mean, I, I don't know that it's a, I think if we wanna overlay Lincoln as the capital district, that we ought to overlay Lincoln in some other design phase. I, I'm not, I think it's, I think the ship has sailed a little bit on that, but if you wanna say Lincoln from I-44 to the capital area, or maybe down to the OU Health Science Center, that makes sense to me, but just to pick a discrete portion of Lincoln and say we're not gonna allow beer bars, this seems to be not necessarily a precedent that we might wanna undertake, given the fact that, what's next? MacArthur between Sixty-third and Meridian? I mean, or between Sixty-third and Northwest Highway? Who's the, where's the gate? I mean, I get Lincoln Boulevard, I think Lincoln, but I think if we're gonna undertake that, that it ought to be a bigger item. I mean, it ought to be a capital gateway overlay district or something like that.
Can we continue or postpone setting it for public hearing and get a little bit more, the parameters set a little bit more?
Yeah, we can defer the item, sure.
Defer the item and get a little bit more specifics on it. Till the next meeting.
All right. Motion then?
Second.
A motion and a second to continue item twenty-six to March fourteenth. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item twenty-seven is to introduce and set for public hearing on March the fourteenth a resolution of the planning commission amending section four point six of the subdivision regs regarding certificates of occupancy in subdivisions where a surety has been accepted in lieu of completion of improvements. Probably familiar with this.
Now, Dan, we talked about this...
Yes.
...at, at the last meeting. We can do this in a subdivision regulation, which was...
Right, you can do this as long as it's amendment to the subdivision regulations. You can't just request people not to grant permits. It has to be, you have to have some sort of regulation that prohibits it, and that's what this is drafted for, so that we don't get in the situation where building permits are issued, and then people go in in good faith, I suppose, and construct their home to come in, and they, they can't get an occupancy permit.
Yeah. Is that why either of you two are sitting here?
You're sitting there somewhere. I don't want to interfere.
May I, may I ask, I was not entirely clear from looking at this whether we are giving the staff some sort of discretion to decide whether or not, no?
No.
It's just, okay.
If the bond has been in default, or other security instruments in default, they can't issue building permits.
Are you setting it for hearing?
Yes.
I would move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to set item twenty-seven. Cast your votes, and that is set. And Janice, the reason is we're beginning to get C.O. requests in... And Janice, the reason is we're beginning to get C.O. requests in areas and another avenue of putting pressure on the surety company is from the development community and the home builders to actually get the improvements made rather than have repeated trips to court. Okay, Russell?
There are no other items.
There are no other items. Okay, Planning Commission committees? Planning Commissioners, Mr. Allen?
Yes. In discussion with our chairman and a couple of the staff members, and my councilperson, and some other folks, in light of our drought situation in Oklahoma, and of course, it's not just in Oklahoma, it's in several states. And I, I don't want to be an alarmist, because I think we've got one of the best aquifers anywhere, or water wells, and I think Oklahoma City's got some of the best supplies of water in the city around us. So, but I want to be a realist, and I, I think it's time that we look at our RA zoning and our RA 2 zoning with maybe extending the RA zoning up to 2 acres and above, and the RA 2 zoning up to 5 acres. With some other considerations, I know about four, four or five years ago, we asked for water quality and quantity on each one of our RA zonings, which we're getting. And I thought we were drilling wells, not using the existing wells. But I, I guess, as long as those, those existing wells are deep enough, I assume that our staff has decided that's good enough. And as I said in, in earlier in the meeting, I'm one of those culprits that like to have my whole acre green and pretty and mowed and manicured and so on. And I've come to the reality that that may not be the best thing to do. Like I said, I like to take a shower, and I like to flush my stools. And I think it's time that we start looking not only at the subdivisions where we have to have wells and septic systems, but even subdivisions where we're adding to the load of water that we're supplying to residential houses. I mean, the regular R1 zoning, I think that's something that we need to take a look about, look at. I would like to request that we, on RA and RA 2 zonings, that we draft some kind of ordinance and have a meeting, a joint meeting with the council and the Planning Commission and attorneys, engineers, and so on, to sit down and discuss this. And I think, you know, it's, I don't think we're too late, but I don't think we need to delay it very much. And I know, you know, we're on a odd-even restriction right now in the city of Oklahoma City and several cities around the state. And, you know, fortunately, we did get a little bit of water the last few days, and we did get a little water running the last few days, but it's been several months since we, we've had that kind of rain in this area. So I think it's time that we start conserving our water and looking at things that we can still move and still have some, some kind of, some kind of ability to manage the water that we use. And I'm not sure that that's exactly the words that I wanted to use, but I think that gets the point across. And I'd like to hear from, James, I know you've got areas that, you know, you, you have to have water wells and looking at RA zoning and RA 2 zoning and so on and so forth. You know, even with these acre zonings, my, my, my house right now, where I live, if my well were to go dry, I could not drill another well. The, the way my, my yard is, is configured, the way the lot is configured and so on and so forth. It's just one of those things, and probably what would have to happen, we'd have to pull all the casing and everything, the existing well, which is very, very expensive, and re-drill that same well, which is very, very expensive. And I don't think I'm anywhere close to running out of water, but I don't want to run out of water. So, James, do you, I'd like to hear from you.
Yeah, we, we have some of those, you know, we have a lot of area that has impacted the same way. What I, have it, you know, I guess what I, when I start thinking about it, I wonder have we, have any studies show that the amount of water is running? I know we had drought, but is it running out, or, or sometimes when they get to a drought level, opposed to doing an ordinance, a lot of times they'll do a moratorium that in certain areas, it can't be developed, so I, I really don't know. I haven't heard anything. I don't, I don't have anything to back up any, any data or anything that says that we're running out of water. I know we have a lot of rural area in our area.
Well, when Jim called me yesterday and brought up the issue of the RA and the RA 2, I said, I think if we're gonna talk about water, it's a broader issue than rural areas. And that it is something that we do need to talk to the council about, but I also think we need to be talking to the development community and the engineers and figure out exactly what the issues are and what the, what the outlook is. I mean, we're obviously in a lawsuit over the Sardis Water Source right now. I'm assuming we're gonna wind up with some water out of that at the end of the day. But water is gonna be a scarcer resource in the future in this part of the country, and we know it. So it's something that we ought to be looking at more broadly, or I should say, when I say broadly, I mean, citywide and for all the different kinds of users we have. Everything from residential to industrial and everything in between. We need to provide for, you know, the growth of the city, the management of the water. And I think we need the water, wastewater department and the water trust in these discussions as well. So I don't think it's something we're gonna arrive at overnight, but we're also doing a new master plan, which my guess is, has another year to run, Russell, at least, before we're done, maybe longer?
Plus or minus.
I'm gonna be here forever. And...
Just a ploy to keep you here, Joe.
Yeah, thanks. But I think that needs to be thought of in the context of the master plan. At this point, it's certainly an important enough issue that it needs its own discussion area, so my suggestion was to take it much broader than the RA area. Janice?
And so what exactly should happen next?
I think maybe we, as the Planning Commission, ought to propose that those discussions commence and with the parties that I've enumerated. And, I mean, we're not at a stage where I think we can write an ordinance or draft an ordinance. I think we're too soon for that, but...
So are you suggesting that, that the next thing that should happen is that we should have a joint meeting with the council, or are you suggesting that we should instruct the staff to start that ball rolling?
I think we want the data gathering to occur before we meet with the council. We want to have more information.
That is already occurring, obviously, because we're in constant dialogue with the utilities department. In fact, we met with them this morning and had some very interesting things to say about the difficulties that they face going forward in being able to supply water, but also the cost of water is going to be substantially higher, it appears to me. So that's obviously a concern for, for yourselves and for everybody else in the policymaking role that relates to that. You may want to have a conversation with representatives of utilities department. In fact, we have utilities on for the next study session to, not on that particular topic, but it could maybe broaden.
Can we...
Do you think it ought to be two separate categories? In other words, do you think we ought to look at RA and RA 2 and then look at general Oklahoma City supply of water as another study session, or do you think it all should be combined?
I kind of think we have to look at it globally in terms of the city. Brian, you wanted to talk to us about this. I think, I think this would be very hard. It's, it's gonna be almost like looking at Lincoln and saying, no, an overlay for ABCs, we're gonna have an overlay where we're not gonna do such and such with water in, in AA or something. I think maybe we need...
Just before, before you say anything, Brian, there was a presentation to the city council about a month ago from, a meteorologist who was talking about those long-term drought trends. And when you look at that very long-term data, it appears as though we're in, we're in a drought now, but the extent of that drought may be beginning to mimic the more severe droughts back in the 30s, so...
Well, if you look at a hundred-year history...
It's, you know, it's hard to predict, obviously, but, but it does seem to indicate that. It might be useful to get that information, also.
I mean, if you look at a hundred-year history of weather patterns in Oklahoma, you will see that more than half of that time has been dry. And, you know, the last 10 years or so prior to, say, two years ago, was an unusually wet segment.
Correct.
And so we sort of, you know, we get used to, something lasts five or 10 years, we kind of get pretty used to it.
Yeah.
And we forget what it was 10 years or more before when it was really dry. And we've been through those cycles. Go ahead, Brian.
You know, you might start down the road with one global group, looking at globally, but I think there are two different issues. One's the water well, so maybe it splits later. But one of the things I'd suggest, I used to, we did a lot of rural subdivision work in the Mustang area, and I quit doing them because the more I'm getting, the more honest I'm getting, or I haven't lied, but it's more open, the more, the more open I'm getting.
Better life than never, Brian.
We've gotta have somebody that understands groundwater, because I can get two guys in here that are both experts that can, that can sell it either way, depending on the case. And I, I have an water well at my house, and for my sprinklers, the guy said, you need this size horse motor to do so many gallons per minute, or you can put this size for gallons per minute. Well, that has nothing to do with quantity. You know what I mean? And I remember in Mustang, there were some neighbors next door said, you know, at night, at 7 o'clock, we're running our bathtub, but we're getting dirty water coming out. That's when I stopped doing them in that area, because I thought, ugh, that's not good long-term. Maybe great for a year or two, but in a drought now, we'd be in trouble. So I, you know, I'd be glad to do whatever I can do, serve on whatever as far as the engineering community. It's, it's, it's an issue. And I, I'd hate to just say, let's not do any more, more one-acre lots, because there may be some areas that that's okay. But I think there needs to be, I don't know what the test requires now, but I don't know that, say, in 20 gallons a minute takes care of how much quantity there is. Well, how, for how long is that? Oh, and the one other thing, I was talking to him, maybe you could get to where you do an RA and you approve RA zoning, subject to meeting the regulations that we come up with for water quantity. Because drilling a test well on your site is about $10 a foot, so 175-foot well, you know, that's 17, or 1750, plus a couple thousand bucks, put in some casing, and you know, you're looking at $5,000 or $6,000 to drill a test well. And you don't want to do that, come in here, and then all of a sudden, it's, well, the traffic won't, won't take care of that many lots. Maybe it's subject to meeting these other regulations, so maybe it's a two, two-step process, possibly. I'm just, again, I'll probably never get hired by another guy who wants to do RA zoning, but that's okay.
Well, another thing with the, with the test wells, what you can do, and I, I think, if I'm not mistaken, there's a couple of cities that do, does this, I mean, you know exactly or pretty much where that house is gonna sit, so you can drill a well on that lot...
Yes.
And use it for that, that house.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but, but you see my point, that you don't want to put two wells in, cost you 10 grand, then come in here and you all say, you know, we really don't want that kind of zoning out there. You know what I mean? So we've got to be assured of that before, before developers are gonna spend $10,000 to $20,000.
Right.
But I think the test needs to be done. I'm not, I'm not doubting that.
Just a question of when?
Yeah.
Car or horse?
Can't, can't we, as the commission, can't we adjust our zoning on, on, I mean, our, the size of lots on RA and RA 2?
That's a zoning ordinance change rather than a subdivision regulation change, and that would go to council.
Yeah, then I don't want to do those with the P U D. That's the mechanism to vary that.
Can we draft the ordinance to do that and have a study session just on that?
Maybe we'll have a study session for it.
Right.
I, I'm not sure with the information that I have in front of me now, that it's time to start that discussion, because that's a, that's a very broad and highly-charged conversation in my view. That, that, for a particular issue that we've all agreed, it seems to me that we don't have enough information on to form an opinion as to what the need is either. I, I think it's, it may be a serial point, but I, I think that's, I think it's a little premature to start talking about an ordinance change where we're changing lot sizes, making it such a sweeping change to the zoning ordinance, because I view this as a sweeping change to zoning ordinance. You're cutting densities down by half in a significant portion of the city, and that's, that's gonna get some, rightly should get some attention, but I think that's a very deliberate process that we have to go through if we're gonna even consider that.
I can agree with you, because it may come to that point where we change the amount of land per house, but we need to know where we stand with the water before, it may have to, may have to take on another complexity after we find out what's our really, the information concerning how much water, the projected, you know, some of that data, some more information. We may have to make another adjustment in it. If we make the adjustment in front of the information, you know, it might be premature, as Mike was saying.
Well, see, one of the things that I didn't think about, well, for instance, my lot, not being big enough to drill another well on. And this can happen with just about any lot in an RA zoning where you, and see, we've got, with the way RA zoning is written, you can, that lot can be less than an acre, okay? And Councilman White and I met with a, a water well driller that's been, their family's been in it for 55 years, and, you know, that's one of the problems they're having. If, if a well goes dry on a one-acre track, you just don't have enough room on it to drill another well. And it's very expensive to drill a well, to, you know, to clean that well out and re-drilling.
Well, I'm, I'm slightly confused about sort of how we identify what the problem is we're trying to grapple with, what we do about gathering information about what the problem is and what the pros and cons to solution are, and, you know, what we should do next. I'm, I hear there's a problem, I think, I hear that we at least want to look at the possibility that there's something we can do about it, but I, I don't quite get what we do next.
Well, I think you'd have to, we'd have to identify what, what the issue is, and I, I think there are different opinions here on the issue as to what that is. And then to put that in the form of a discussion, a white paper or something, and these are the issues that we want to talk about, and you can talk about it first, if you like. You could talk about it with the water trust, or you could talk about it with the city council and the water trust at some point. It may be a multi-step process, but I agree with some of the statements that if we, without adequate support, it's going to be a very significant dialogue, it's gonna be a significant dialogue one way or the other...
You're gonna say with support.
Absolutely. To change, to change the RA zoning, and this is prior to... To change the RA zoning, and this is prior to the comprehensive plan. So, you know, I mean, my preference would be to have all that information wrapped up and then use the plan to implement that, because you're looking at a similar timeframe, I think. To have that dialogue with the development community is going to take a while.
Do we have a study session coming up?
We have a study session on the 14th, and utilities department will be there to...
I wonder if it might be possible just to have a, you know, sort of an outline of, here are the different possible issues. It's either this, or it's bigger than that, or it's smaller than that. And maybe we could at least talk about it in that little detail, or, you know, much detail, and decide where we want to go before we try to set staff on the path of gathering enough information even for a real study session, dialogue about, you know, who we would want to invite, who should be at the table, you know, what's going to even be discussed or grappled with, let alone resolved. You know, I think right now, I don't have a sense of whether this is a little problem or whether it's a really big problem, or whether it's a big problem that we're just going to take a little bite out of, and, you know, and I think we need to at least have a feeling about that much before we go any further.
Yeah, I mean, you can certainly exercise due caution at this point in time in considering any of the applications that come before us. If there's uncertainty there about why it is going to be the impact on the subdivision through water supply or the aquifer, or whatever that impact is, that's what you have the authority and you do on a regular basis.
But, you know, I mean, water, I don't know about you guys, but, you know, I'm no engineer, and I, water quality is one of those things like drainage and sewage and, you know, that I just have to, I listen to staff, and I, they tell me there are requirements, and we either meet them or we don't. And I think if we're going to go beyond that, we also have to be very careful not, to keep the playing field level, you know? And I want to be sure that I even have a handle on, you know, what the issues are, what the questions are that need to be asked, or why this piece of property might be different from that. We always have the difficulty of relying on the applicant for the information that we need to make our decisions. And I mean, you know, that can sometimes be tricky, let's just say it that way. And, you know, I, with technical issues like this, I feel very uncertain about exercising very much discretion. So, I'd like to at least explore what the issues are and, you know, what we need to be looking at and thinking about.
The rest of our process is at the forefront of the utilities department. They're on the front line of dealing with the drought issues, so obviously, they've given it a lot of thought. And, you know, there's some excellent staff in the utilities department that are fully cognizant of the issues that are confronting us. It's difficult to determine whether we're in extraordinary circumstances now. There are indicators that that may be the case, and to be on the safe, we may want to be on the safe side. You don't want to get to the edge of the cliff before you decide whether you're going to keep going or not. But, I mean, having as much information as possible to be able to adjust the decision-making as we go along, I think, is important.
Let me make a suggestion. We're meeting with the wastewater people on the 14th.
Correct.
And the study session anyway. Even though this isn't the topic that they're coming to meet with us about, if we could ask them to come with the concerns that they're dealing with right now, just what are the issues that they're grappling with that concern them? And for each of us on the planning commission, if we would come with any water concerns or the water concerns that concern us, in fact, if we funnel those through to Russell ahead of time, he can consolidate that. So, you know, Jim, you can come with the RA issues and maybe we can have at least a brief, informed discussion about what some of the concerns might be as a starting point. Okay. All right. Planning commission members, any other members with items? Okay. Development services? JJ's walked out.
I've got a few other things on...
Okay, go ahead.
So, the study session, we'll have utilities. We'll also be giving you an overview of demographic trends. We've been studying the latest data on that, so that's also part of the informing the Plan OKC process. And then we will have urban development committee. We have miscellaneous ordinance amendments, commercial vehicles, and then we're also coming back with the traffic impact assessments and modifications to that, actually easing up on it.
Dan? Brian brought up an interesting subject. He said that he quit doing some of the RA stuff because of somebody getting mud in there, taking a shower with mud. Does the city have any responsibility if we approve a subdivision that has water wells and those water wells go dry?
Okay. One, do you just, do you have something else, Russell?
Not really.
One thing I'd like to ask for is data on the cost of sprinklers in houses. I mean, we've got developments, I brought this up before, we've got developments where we've had sprinklers installed now, and there's been a lot of discussion about what they cost. We should have some empirical data we can gather from existing developments with sprinklers. It'd be nice to know what those data are.
I think the trend line's moving down on cost.
One would think so, but, I mean, it'd be nice to see that.
Yeah.
And, you know, in the future, we'd have informed discussions then about, you know, firefighting alternatives and the cost of same. We're about to go into executive session. Ladies, did you come to talk to us about anything, or are we just entertainment? Not so much. We feel the same way up here, so...
We're just sorry we didn't ask you.
Okay, well, thank you for being here. Anything else before we go into executive session? We'll need a motion to do that.
So, move.
If a motion is second to go into executive session, cast your votes. And we are...